Good afternoon, everyone. Today is October 24th, 2023, and we open the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education meeting. Let's do the flag salute? We do it at open session. Okay, we... No public speakers. We are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education meeting of October 24th, 2023. And we will now have an announcement about language access. Buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español y lenguaje de señas estadounidenses en Zoom esta noche. Good evening. We have interpretation into Spanish and American Sign Language available on Zoom tonight. Thank you. Gracias. Thank you. Dr. Maldonado, would you please lead us on the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise and face the flag.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. And we now have our student board member report.
Announcement of closed session.
Oh, excuse me. As you can tell, I'm new at this. I'm in training today. So we are going to do announcement of closed session items. The Board of Education met in closed session this afternoon and took two actions. Action number one. In closed session, the Board took action to approve or ratify the October 10th, 2023 Final Settlement Agreement and General Release Between Parents and the District and Students versus Santa Barbara Unified School District, Special Education Due Process, OAH, Case 202, 307, 0219, pursuant to which the district has agreed to fund and provide educational services to the student and the student's parents have agreed to release claims against the district in exchange for the educational services specified in the agreement. And the vote was as follows. Members Banning, Escobedo, Muñoz, Alvarez voted in favor, 4-0, Wendy Simsmotin being absent. And the second announcement is, it gives me great pleasure to announce that the Board has voted unanimously, 4-0, to appoint Mr. Fred Rosso as principal of Santa Barbara High School for the remaining of this school year. Thank you. And we now go to student board member report.
One of the biggest things happening at all the high schools this week and last week was homecoming. So I know all the ASBs have been working to organize Spirit Week, the football game. SM had theirs last week and DP and SB have theirs this weekend. I would also like to highlight Girls' Flag Football with Dos Publics being ranked in the top 20 and invited to the L.A. Chargers Flag Football Championships. And it's just very exciting to see an increase in participation and opportunity for girls in sports and seeing Flag Football being such a hit among all the schools this year. October has also been Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we've been wearing pink on Wednesdays and handing out things like bracelets to raise awareness of the disease and also stand with those who have been impacted by breast cancer. And then this past Wednesday, we had our first Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and we were able to get students from all the high schools, and we got to know each other. And we went over the Panorama Survey and also through discussion, two things that we want to focus on were increasing student engagement and belonging because we found that those were lower on the survey. And that's just something students felt overall was just problems with like burnout and wanting to feel more connected to school. So going forward, we're going to work on finding ways to have events and opportunities where students are excited and can feel connected to the schools and also find ways to incorporate more breaks to decrease burnout. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board members, do you have comments or correspondence you'd like to share? Or first we go to Dr. Maldonado.
You're doing a great job, Vice President Alvarez.
I feel so much better now. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, members of the public and everyone that came out tonight. Last week, the district took part in the Great California Shakeout. This annual event is held throughout the state to encourage people to practice their earthquake procedures. Anytime we have an earthquake, we encourage people to know the procedures. And I think my staff will put the slide up in a second to duck, cover, and hold before evacuating. That is our policies. We want to encourage everyone to continue to stay vigilant, make sure they have emergency preparedness for not just earthquakes, but any of the various emergency things that happen throughout our city and county. So please continue to be prepared with your supplies, be ready at home in case of an earthquake or any natural disaster. We also want families to know that our staff does have safety procedures in place. We have safety plans in every school so that everyone could keep your students safe as well. October is also Cyber Security Month. This is a crucial time. ASB Unified is emphasizing the importance of protecting our student and employee personal information. We want to ensure that we have a safe digital learning environment and educate our staff and community on best practices. In an age where cyber threats are ever evolving, we are dedicating coordinated efforts to reinforce our commitment to the safety and security of our educational community. This evening, Mr. Ramirez will cover a bit more about this effort. But you do see on the screen, we want to make sure everyone's continuing to use strong passwords, using a password manager. Turning on multi-factor authentication is another great way to stay safe. And then we also want everyone to be able to recognize and report any phishing attempts. If you get an email that looks fishy, for lack of a better word, definitely report it to the ETS department. The ETS does run some tests to kind of check on us to make sure we do report these to them as well so that they know we're being vigilant and keeping all our information safe. So they are looking for us to report those to them. We also had an incredible day of professional development last week. I want to thank all the educators, principals, and staff that came together. You see some pictures here of our teachers learning and our parents educators, food service staff, and many others. I want to thank Mr. Matt Didman. I got a chance to go see the training that they had for food service staff which dealt with conflict resolution. I took a lot away from that training because it talked about the fact that we have something close to four to five generations of workers in our workforce this year, which is definitely can create conflict because every generation has a different way of looking at their work and the way that they learn, the way that they do things. And it's important for us to keep that in mind. I had a chance to also see some of the STEAM teachers doing their planning in the elementary school at McKinley. And I know there was many other offerings by different interests or grade levels. Saturday, our Student and Family Services Committee, sorry, Department, held the first Family Empowerment Conference. I want to thank Ms. Edison, Frankie, Peggy, and all the other team members that collaborated and coordinated with many of our local community nonprofits, city departments, to focus on providing resources and empowerment to parents and caregivers. It, I have heard, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there, that it was an incredible success. We're hoping that this is, this being the first time we do this, that in future years, we'll be able to get more parents and caregivers to come out. There was a lot of valuable information, expert advice. And we just want to continue to connect with families with resources, like I said, throughout the year and in years to come. Some of you may have heard or seen the movie A Million Miles Away. It is an incredible biopic about Mexican-American engineer and NASA astronaut Jose Hernandez. I wanted to thank the La Cumbre leadership and Santa Barbara Junior High leaders also for showing this very inspiring film to our students to both motivate and support them in their efforts and in reaching their goals, their dreams. The movie, I highly recommend it, and I typically don't recommend movies, is showcasing the power of human determination and the wonders of science and technology applied in the study of our universe. One of the most inspiring parts about the movie is the response that we got from students. Multiple people have shared with me that students would spontaneously cheer throughout the movie during the times they felt represented, including when Hernandez made it to space. This is exactly the kind of work we're looking to continue to do to make sure we, our students are both seen, felt, and heard in our schools. I also want to recognize that one of the most important people in the movie was Jose Hernandez's elementary school teacher, and it shows the power of changing lives. So if you haven't seen the movie, I highly recommend it. It's on Prime, Amazon Prime. As always, I want to end my report with the Every Child Award, honoring those going above and beyond our, for our families and children. And the Every Child Award is really, you know, it's meant to recognize so many of the things we're already doing well in Santa Barbara Unified. And it's not just about going above and beyond, but it's really making that extra effort that we can know somebody by name, but if we don't really know more about the person other than their name or title or anything else and go past that and actually get to know their story, we're really not creating that incredible human connection as I was saying earlier with the movie. So we are looking for nominations of people that are really going that extra mile to get to know the Every Child. Sorry, I'm going to quote my father, which I never do. My father would always talk about every mind is its own world. And getting to know everybody else really takes time to build those relationships and getting to know them. So I'm going to start with Maria Olivo from La Cumbre Junior High School. During nutrition and lunch, Maria makes an effort to know our students, especially our extra-love kids. Whether it's greeting people with a smile or asking how a student's day is going, she goes out of her way to make sure that all children feel seen, valued, and heard. Thank you, Maria. From San Marcos High School, Jerry Rosario. He is well-known for building relationships with students, learning their stories, encouraging them to put in the work to make their aspirations come to life. Our campus safety assistants are at the front lines of our efforts to keep kids safe, and Jerry embodies what we want from that position. From Santa Barbara Junior High School, I think everybody knows this gentleman, Marcus Lopez. He is our supervision out front in school every day. It is no exaggeration to say that he literally knows the name, face, and story of every student who enters campus. Furthermore, Santa Barbara Junior High surveys its students four times per year about different perception areas. The results show a phenomenal 75% of the students list Marcus as their trusted adult. Thank you so much, Mr. Lopez. Yes, we can. From Roosevelt Elementary, the fourth-grade teacher team. This team's PLC time is dedicated to refining the learning process, reflecting on data, developing strategies to improve student engagement and outcomes. This team continuously advocates for their students who need extra support and seek to find systemic solutions for the students. Thank you, fourth-grade teachers. And last, from the district office, our very own internal auditor for all our business services, Alana Motlich. Alana helps us navigate the many compliance issues necessary to run the organization. In the past two years, she has managed to, she has managed five audits that hit at the same time. STRS, PERS, Prop 51, Annual Audit, and the big federal program monitoring. This is extraordinary work, and she always rises to the challenge. Thank you, Alana. She definitely challenges and keeps us straight. So with that, board members, I'd like to conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Definitely a lot of positive things going on. Thank you. Now, board members, do you have any comments or correspondence you would like to share? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. I don't have a long report today, but a couple of things to report on. We continue to meet as a Housing Ad Hoc Committee. We got a really insightful presentation from the Housing Authority about tax credits, so Tax Credit 101, which for me just elevated that this is the right partner and also instilled some confidence that really the only investment that we're going to have to make on this is the land and not a financial investment outside of the land. So it was insightful. We're going to continue to meet and push that forward. I believe the next thing that will come to the Board is going to be a joint development agreement or the next stage of the MOU. Next, I was sad to miss. Yesterday was Mental Health and Black Youth, Making Wellness a Priority. Unfortunately, I had, I was called into work and had to work late, but I hope to connect with them to get some of the resources from that webinar last night. I had a meeting with someone to talk about how we can support our students experiencing homelessness and learned quite a bit and got some really valuable resources that I'm more than happy to share with the Board. I also attended the Freedom for Youth Annual Event, and it was amazing to see in how many ways Freedom for Youth is supporting our systems-impacted youth and the fact that it's not only while they're in our schools that they're supporting them, they're also supporting them for opportunities when they graduate. And I actually got to connect with a student that, for those that don't know, I was, I previously worked on the Community Formation Commission that was working to develop a recommendation for police oversight in Santa Barbara. And we had a student that was from Freedom for Youth who showed up every single week. And these were three, four-hour meetings, watching all of our meetings for an entire year, and continuously provided input and public comment and held that commission accountable and ultimately held City Council accountable, showing up for public comment. And it was actually connecting with her at this event. They set her up with an opportunity with another nonprofit to do the exact same work that she did here in Santa Barbara with Freedom for Youth in L.A. And so a great partner for the school district and a lot of really good work that they're doing. And the last update that I have is, I am on the Board of Staying Together to End Sexual Assault, STESA. And we had a Board Retreat on Saturday. And one of the neat parts is hearing updates about the work that they're doing, their staff are doing. And one such of those work efforts is shifting boundaries curriculum that they have at La Cumbre Junior High and Santa Barbara Junior High. And they have over 160 students that are taking part in this curriculum. And they talked about how they have witnessed in this, I think it's like a six-week program, students using the language that they had taught them to set boundaries with their peers. And sometimes jokingly, but the fact that they're using it and that it's in their vernacular is really important. And they did a really neat exercise, I thought, where they had a map of the school campus and they asked each student to highlight the places where they felt safe and the places where they felt were least safe. And they had three colors. It was green, yellow, and red. And through this hotspot mapping, that they called it, they were able to identify the places where students didn't feel safe. And through that exercise of really taking that information from the students, they've been able to work with site leaders to address why students don't feel safe in those spaces and possible solutions for addressing it. And I thought that was really helpful and I, for me, I think a really good exercise for each of our school campuses to take a look at. So again, a lot of good work, some great community partners, and that's my board report.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Ms. Muñoz?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Alvarez. I'd like to also report on the La Cumbre Junior High, the Parent and Student Empowerment Conference that was held and express my appreciation to all the programs that participated there. I'd like to highlight Gandhi Monzanades, who was there. She was an alumni, is an alumni of Santa Barbara City College and is now employed with the Promise Program. So she shares about how, you know, students can attend City College and be able to be successful with that. And I'd also, on Saturday, I saw a student from Adelante Charter School who was selling raffle tickets for an event that they're going to have. I believe, I think it's the first of November, if I'm not mistaken. A young entrepreneur. He had his little table out on State Street and just was very professional as he explained the prizes that are possible, collected the money and so forth, and sold his raffle tickets. He has his goal to be like number one or number two top seller for the school. Very impressed by that. On Sunday, I attended the Santa Barbara Charter School. They had their 30-year celebration of their school. So they had alumni there and current students. They had face painting, tie dyeing, sing-along, book giveaway. And it was just fun to see the kids. The kids, some of them were taller than I, some were, you know, and just interacting with each other. One young girl was painting the face of another little girl that was a little bit younger than her. And just, you know, seeing that interaction, it was just fun. Just a playful and joyful reunion. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Muñoz. Mr. Banning?
I remember as a, as a school administrator, whenever you needed a fix to be around kids. And last week, I had that opportunity to participate and observe the Superintendent Advisory Group with our Board Member and Representatives from each of the high schools. And it was a great opportunity, first of all, for our superintendent and for Dr. Edison and Sheffield to see the kids and explain some of the things that are going on our end and an opportunity to challenge, for the students to challenge themselves about projects to support the school district. But most importantly for me, it was that moment of just enjoying the presence of the kids and hearing the articulate and caring responses that they had to questions and the dedication to helping us see and make things better for them and better for us. So thank you for the opportunity to participate in that meeting on Wednesday. I appreciate it. That's my report.
Thank you. I also attended the Family Empowerment Conference on Saturday, and I was sharing with Dr. Maldonado and my colleagues here. It's absolutely impressive to see how many partnerships we have with the community. I had the opportunity to speak to several of the presenters who were there, and I learned a lot. Many things I thought I already knew and I did not know. So thank you, Ms. Edison. Thank you to Frankie, to Peggy, and everyone else who made this possible. Really appreciate you giving up your weekend to do this. So very appreciative. And we have a lot of guests tonight. So thank you to all of you for being here. We appreciate your presence. We all want to hear from you. And on that note, we have 21 speakers right now signed up so that we can hear from each and every one of the speakers. We are going to limit to 90 seconds. Do not be dismayed. If you have, if you do not finish your comment, please go ahead and email it to us. Be assured that we read them. We cannot always answer back, but we do read your comments. And actually, I think we just got a couple more. How many more did we get? So we probably have about 25 speakers. So please bear with us. We will, Mr. Escobedo will call your name. Please come up to the podium. He will call three names at a time. So if you could please approach the podium so that we can keep this going. And who is the first speaker?
Thank you. And for all the speakers out there, if you keep an eye on the yellow button right there next to the mic, that'll give you your cue that you have 30 seconds left. So our first speaker for tonight is Deana Davis, followed by Joel Block, followed by Aaron Cavazos. Welcome. Is the mic on? We can restart the time.
Now? Let's do a test. The green light's on?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Ready? All right. Good evening. My name is Deana Davis, and this is my son Benjamin. He's a senior at Santa Barbara High School. We're here tonight to support all our teachers, of course, but we're also here to share our concerns related to special education specifically. We're concerned about classrooms without teachers. We're concerned that some students are missing case managers, speech and language pathologists, and psychologists, and some are receiving services on Zoom. This is not acceptable. We worry about the shortage of parent educators and how that affects our students and teachers. Year after year, unfortunately, we rely on agencies to supply these positions at a higher cost instead of fully supporting our own. Apologies in advance for the underdeveloped metaphor to come. Instead of patching our leaking roof with bubble gum and Band-Aids, we need to invest and build the house that attracts new talented teachers and specialists and honors the dedicated staff we have now. For some of you, this may be the first time you're hearing of these issues. I hope not. I hope you will have conversations with parents, educators, and our specialists to learn more about the issues our students are facing. I look forward to having a cup of coffee with you soon to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Next, we have Joel Block. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Many times I've come before this Board to speak. I know many of you and have interacted in a friendly manner with you and many of the district office employees. Despite this, I am at a loss to explain your current thinking and actions. On October 12th, the district publicly announced that negotiations with the teachers' union would begin on November 15th. What it did not say was the district would wait until at least next January to negotiate about salary and health care costs. Do you believe that we don't understand or see what is going on? Last year, you refused to help teachers by reopening salary negotiations. Instead, you announced an additional 2% raise starting this school year. Do you believe that we are so unsophisticated that we would notice that the raise did not even rise to the then-current level of inflation? In the past, the union's Political Action Committee worked hard to elect school board members, including some currently serving. Do you believe that we will do this again for current board members who appear to have abrogated leadership and deferred to the district employees the decision-making power? If so, who is being naive? Your continued stance on deferring meaningful negotiation will lead to greater and greater resistance. We are strong, and we will not back down because we are SBTA. We are SBTA.
That's your public comment.
We are SBTA.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask that we be respectful of the 90-second timeline. We have a lot of speakers, and we want to hear from all of you. So please respect the time. I'm going to call out the next couple of speakers, if that's okay.
Sure.
We have Eric Nicolson next, followed by Haley Dixon Rahore. Welcome.
Thank you. Couple things. One, thank you to all my colleagues who are out here today. Who worked past their contract hours today? Who's working now? Just to make sure everyone's clear how hard we actually work. We're not here to... And I just want to use, borrow a couple words from the Board where we're saying every student, well, how about every student, every educator, everyone in the community? Let's throw us all together. We're spotlighting teachers, which is great. Teachers who are going to know all the students. Well, SBTA members want you to get to know us in the same way. My name is Aaron Cavazos. I am a preschool teacher for the last 15 years. I'm an artist. My favorite holiday is Halloween. And my monthly paycheck does not cover my mortgage on a house purchased 20 years ago, which we purchased it at under 900 square feet. So it's not very fancy, except for the Halloween decorations. So students benefit when high-quality teachers know their school, know their administrators, know their community. Revolving doors just make me dizzy. And I have had, in the last 15 years, seven administrators that I've worked for. And I'm in the same department. I haven't changed. A side note, the consistent leadership changes don't really help anyone. A side note, the consistent leadership changes don't really help anyone, so I want to keep that in mind as well as with changes in staffing, our leadership matters as well. Students benefit, oh man, that, that 90 seconds, there aren't that many people here. Y'all talk a lot more.
If you have additional comments, feel free to email. We do read all of the public comments. Welcome.
Good evening, Eric Nicolson here, Santa Barbara High School. As always, I am asked to read the names of my colleagues who cannot be here tonight. Zachary Lottes, for childcare reasons. Joe Chenoweth, Alicia Gerbach, childcare reasons. Josefina Valdez, she lives in Oxnard. David Mendoza, childcare. Paul Pasternik, childcare. Patricia Ruth, Kyle Stewart. Laura Wooster-Dorfman, childcare. John Tormi. Steve Todd, Virginia Correo, she has therapy on Tuesday nights. Richard Johnston. Juan Gallardo. Hoya Marchesi, I know I got that wrong, sorry, play rehearsal. Deanna Castro. And lastly, and from my heart, my youngest son Cameron Nicolson asked me to put his name on this list. I believe that young man would be a highly valuable and talented member of the math department at any high school here, but he made the really hard decision to leave his hometown because he can't afford to live here, doesn't want to live with mom and dad anymore, and he moved to San Diego. It breaks my heart that we've lost the great young talent like my own son. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Haley Dixon, and I know I messed up your last name, I apologize. Next, we have Katie Garibay, followed by Sherri Ray. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Haley Dixon Rahor. I've been a teacher in the district for 18 years. I have worked for the district even longer. I absolutely love my students, I love my job, I work hard at my job. I strive to develop and maintain meaningful relationships with each and every one of my students. As I encourage my students to be, I'm a lifelong learner, constantly reflecting on and revising curriculum to provide the best education that I can to my students. As a veteran teacher, I have ties here, and I am dedicated to my students and this community, but it's hard. I commute from Buellton, and when my housing situation changes again in a couple of years, it looks like I will be priced out of there as well. So do I leave the district that I've worked for for over 20 years and love, or add even more to my daily commute? I am also a single mom with one child in college and another in high school, looking toward college. I am so proud of them, and of course, I strongly encourage their continuing educations. I try to help as much as I can, but it's really a struggle. My son is a junior, he has a Cal grant, several scholarships, works two jobs in addition to his full-time class schedule, but it's hard. Every semester, I have to wonder if we can make it work, and his sister hasn't yet joined him. My kids and their friends know that I love teaching. They've expressed interest in joining this profession. It's rewarding, but it's hard. I have to tell them I can't cover my healthcare costs, my car repairs. I can't hardly live, and it shouldn't be this hard. We need to make change.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Katie Garibay. I'm an art teacher at San Marcos High School, and I also have a daughter at one of the elementary schools in the district. At our school and across the district, we are seeing the impact of the district's lack of urgency in retaining teachers. At our school site alone, we had to hire 27 new teachers in the last two years to fill vacant positions. Now, the question is, how many of those teachers will actually stay? In order to retain our teachers, the district needs to urgently address educator working conditions, compensation, healthcare, class sizes, staffing, sped, and much more. The district has repeatedly told SBTA they're not willing to discuss teacher salaries, benefits, or any matters regarding the budget until January. The labor negotiations update the district sent out today implies that they're ready to discuss all areas of our contract. However, they've not clearly communicated to SBTA whether they will in fact address the budget, and we're concerned that their recent message may be misleading. We urge the board to hold the district accountable for starting negotiations for salary and benefits at the November 15th meeting. Teacher retention is an urgent matter that needs to be addressed immediately.
30 seconds.
If the district does not finish negotiations and increase salaries and benefits before the next hiring cycle, we will lose more teachers to neighboring districts, teachers we won't get back. I urge you to use your power as the board to take action now to retain our best teachers so that we can give our students the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rillo, the light is coming on at 20 seconds. The yellow light. So if that's, if that's the case, that's okay, we just need to remind at 20 seconds instead of 30 seconds.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah. So will it be 20? Yes?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll give a warning at 20 seconds. So we have Sherri Ray, followed by Moni DeWitt, followed by Josby Galindo. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm gonna change the subject just a little bit. Good evening, my name is Sherri Ray, I'm the executive director of the Dyslexia Project. October is dyslexia awareness month, but dyslexia affects one in five all year round. It is too often unrecognized in our schools, leading to unnecessary academic struggles, emotional damage, and much worse. Last April, I was invited to present about dyslexia to four fourth-grade classes at one school. At the end, one child stayed behind, looked up at me with big, serious eyes, and said, "I can't read. Maybe do I have dyslexia?" In less than an hour, this brave fourth grader astutely identified what no one else had. After hours of volunteer advocacy, months of meetings, and work with educators, as of yesterday's IEP, this now-fifth grader, with very few foundational skills, feels like the dumbest kid in class and cries daily before school, but he will finally receive appropriate instruction and support services, including counseling now needed for the emotional damage this struggle has inflicted. This is a lucky child. He's one dyslexic student among hundreds or more in this district whose academic needs are misunderstood as a lack of intelligence or motivation. Entire families generational bear this burden without understanding why if they can't pay for tutors. I ask you to please make this a high priority in this district, to educate administrators and staff to recognize dyslexia, identify it, and provide appropriate interventions these children need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah. Dyslexia billionaire Richard Branson, he just founded a charity called Made by Dyslexia, and their new, their new initiative, together with Microsoft, they've provided a free online dyslexia trainer for every teacher around the world so we can start identifying these kids. 100,000 teachers in New York City, superintendent, learned to spot, support, and empower dyslexic children when they took the six-module course called A Day for Dyslexia. The carefully crafted course talks about methodologies that work in the classroom, how to identify dyslexics and use technologies. Many dyslexic minds are brilliant but unrecognized in school, like Sherri just told you. Half the students who dropped out of school are dyslexic, like you heard at Freedom for Youth, and they're much more likely to be incarcerated. I was there as well. We're losing these brilliant minds, the same minds that brought us Lightbulb, Flight, and even the iPhone. In our schools, thousands of students are struggling, casualties of our, of our use of a failed program called Balanced Literacy, which was just discarded by Columbia University. Anyway, these kids need intervention, and what we do here, the multi-system thing, doesn't work because dyslexia is a neurological difference, not a disability, and it needs a structured approach to reading, which we have not offered. It also places burdens on families that are already impacted by racism.
Thank you.
Yes, so please, Made by Dyslexia, let's get on it.
Thank you. Next, we have Josby Galindo, followed by Deborah Reed, followed by Zachary Lottes. Apologies. Welcome.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and cabinet. I'm Josby Galindo. Last time I addressed you, I touched on trust. I feel compelled to broach that topic again. We have read your communication that states that the district stands ready to engage in meaningful negotiations on November 15th on any proposal that are brought forward. However, we are skeptical of your intentions because in our last negotiation cycle, you kept teetering back and forth on whether you reopen negotiations on salary. You never did. Our trust remains broken. Your public statement today states that district values its employees. Last year, you demanded to be given autonomy in making any determination on any potential salary increase, but it would have to be done outside of bargaining. You came back with an amount that demonstrated that you do not understand the financial hardships our educators face in our community. You came back with an amount that does not retain our highly qualified teachers, nor attracts enough teachers to fill our open positions. We educators are finding it difficult to believe that you value us. We do not trust your words. Our only true recourse is to look closely at your actions, and we will judge you by those actions. We're hopeful that you will have a timely and meaningful counterproposal or acceptance of our proposal on compensation on November 15th. Once we see that, your actions, once we see your actions aligned with your words, we can begin to build trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
A reminder, if the speakers please come up, the ones that Mr. Escobedo called, and this way we can begin right after the one speaking is finished. Who's after this speaker, Mr. Escobedo?
We have Zachary, I'm so sorry, Lottes. Lottes, apologies, I will not get it wrong.
So if Mr. Lottes can be ready to speak right after the 90 seconds, thank you. Please begin.
Speaking on behalf of my colleague who cannot be here in person this evening, she says, "I leave my house in Buellton before my children wake up so I can arrive at school by 7:00 a.m. when my students start to arrive. Because of this, it is important to me that I'm home in the evenings to see my own children for a few hours before they go to sleep. My name is Shannon Montez. I'm a fourth-generation Santa Barbara resident, graduate of Santa Barbara High, where I currently teach CP English 11 and 12. To my students, I'm Ms. M. I write this letter on their behalf. I interviewed for a position in this district eight times before I was offered a tenure tack position. At the time, there were over 80 applicants for the position I was applying for. It was a competitive, and a lot of people wanted to work here. Fast forward only a few short years, and that is no longer the case. The district is no longer hiring the cream of the crop because of the lack of a competitive salary to attract the caliber of teacher our students deserve. I leave my phone number on the whiteboard. Many of my students don't have a stable or trusted grown-up that they can reach out to when they're in crisis. I take their calls at 3:00 a.m. and on the weekends because I believe my students are worth the unpaid hours. I say this to show my dedication to my responsibilities as an educator. I also have a responsibility to my family, to be able to provide for them. If I move to a district closer to my home, I'd get a 10K raise, and on top of that, full benefits for my whole family for less than $300 a month. I know that no matter how many credentials I have, I have three, and how great a teacher I am, she's amazing.
Thank you.
To you, I'm replaceable."
Thank you. Next, we have Zachary Lottes, followed by Lesbia Wright, followed by Shay Peñaro. On Zoom? Okay. Do we want to do that one now? Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Zachary Lottes. I teach physics and chemistry at Santa Barbara High. The district's words have repeatedly fallen short. They say one thing in public statements while their actions say another. I no longer trust public statements that are put out by the district, and I don't think that the public and parents listening should, should trust them either. The district loves to proudly assert the slogan that we give every child every chance every day. Meanwhile, we're out of compliance with IEPs because we can't hire enough paraeducators to support our most valuable students. I have students whose Spanish teacher is a computer program because we couldn't hire a Spanish teacher, because it's not a rational economic decision for a teacher to join this district when our salary schedule is not competitive. My colleague at San Marcos has a physics class with a large number of students with IEPs, and he is supposed to have a special education co-teacher to support those students, but he doesn't have one. The district released a parent square message this afternoon saying, quote, "Compensation and health benefits are the most critical and impactful topics to solve. The district values its employees and stands ready to negotiate in meaningful negotiations on November 15th of any proposals that are brought forward," end quote. If you believe that, then why aren't those issues in your sunshine letter? Why are you only saying it now? And why aren't you bringing your proposals to the table on those issues on November 15? We can't believe your words until you back them up with actions. Come to the table on November 15th with a real offer for how you will solve the current staffing crisis, a real offer for how you will raise salaries, a real offer for how you will reduce the cost of health insurance, a real offer for how you will really give every child every chance every day, or we will keep showing up and keep speaking out until you do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Lesbia Wright, followed by Shay Peñaro. Welcome.
Do I just start?
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Lesbia Perdomo Wright, and I am a parent to a child who has been diagnosed with autism and has done individualized education plans since he was in kindergarten. One of the key components of my son's IEP is the provision of a one-on-one support. Previously, during our time in the Galita School District, he had a dedicated paraeducator providing this support. However, after transitioning to Santa Barbara, in March of last year, this support was difficult to establish and was described to me as in-classroom assistance. To be honest, I'm still not certain about the implications of this shift, but what I saw, especially last year, was an in-classroom assistant who was poorly trained and who was unable or perhaps unwilling to engage with my child. With that being said, I want to acknowledge the dedication of my son's teachers last year and this year, who have played a pivotal role in his academic success despite certain deviations from his IEP and despite a massive transition from one school to another. Their efforts have been instrumental in his achievements, and this is why I'm here today. I recently discovered that our district has lost a staggering 100 employees this year alone, and double that number over the past two years. Why are so many educators and support staff leaving this district? Is it possible that the hemorrhage of employees is linked to the challenge in providing adequate support for special education? I urge the board to investigate and address the reasons behind this exodus of dedicated professionals and the impact on the support available to students with special education, special needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
The next couple of speakers, I believe this says Lindsey, I'm having, Viking? Vining, thank you.
And followed by Maggie Burke. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Shay Peñaro. I'm a fourth-year teacher at Santa Barbara High, as well as an alumni of Santa Barbara High, La Cumbre Junior High, and Monroe Elementary. I value the public school system and the positive impact it can have on a community like ours, but in the face of rising costs of living in our community, we are losing our best teachers, and our students are losing out as a result. The choices that you have the power to make will determine if SB Unified continues to be a public institution of quality education or a holding tank for underserved students. Please negotiate on salary and benefits now. We need to retain qualified teachers in our classrooms, and the longer we wait, the more likely it is that teachers may be forced to leave us, to quit at this very podium. I do not want to quit. I want to continue to give my students the quality free education that I received here that they deserve, but I and my colleagues cannot do so without your immediate action and support. Please open negotiations with SBTA and come to the table ready to talk about all our issues, including those that impact finances. Help us serve our kids in a way that's sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Vining, followed by Maggie Burke, who will be followed by Kim Barron. Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Lindsey Vining. I'm actually one of your brand-new math teachers that I know you had trouble filling those spots, and I'm here to tell you that of all the people I've talked to who are new to this district, half are thinking about leaving after this year. Excuse me, I lost my voice earlier. I've taught at the middle school level, high school level, and college level. I was a school administrator for eight years before coming to this district. My husband continues to encourage me to leave education, and I'm fighting with him to try to stay, but I'm telling you right now that it's not an easy fight when I barely make enough to pay my bills. He's telling me to leave, and I'm here telling you that you guys have an opportunity to keep people like me in your schools. I'm dedicated to math education for our students. I have some of the hardest students to educate who are coming in from those support classes. I also have a newcomer section and teach in Spanish. I barely speak Spanish, but I do it for them. I also feed them. I am estimating to spend about $2,000 this year to feed the kids because they're hungry and they're thirsty. All right? I'm a dedicated professional. I would like to be treated as such, and I'm here to support the union. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maggie Burke. I'm an English teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. My colleague and I, we ask our students to pay attention to their thinking as they read, view, and explore different texts. We ask them, "What do you notice and what do you wonder?" So I'm gonna do that now. What do I notice? I notice that I'm not alone in my exhaustion, frustration, and stress. I notice that there are many attempts, there have been many attempts to relay the urgency of our concerns. I noticed how many positions remain vacant. I noticed the cost of rent, food, gas... I noticed the cost of rent, food, gas, and bills are rising without slowing. I wonder what the root cause of this crisis is. Have we talked about its characteristics, its impact, who benefits, and who is harmed? I wonder what the barriers are to being heard, understood, valued, and secure. Why do these barriers exist? For whom do they exist? I wonder what this community will look, feel, and sound like at the end of the year, in one year, five years, and 10 years. I wonder what it would take for us to collectively and creatively reimagine a more sustaining, just future. I offer these questions as generative opportunities to think honestly and critically.
20 seconds.
Our schools need stability in staffing, our choices, our budgets represent our values and priorities. What do the current choices and budgets say about the district priorities? Again, we need to work together to realize our power. I made a choice to stay here in Santa Barbara. I want to stay here. I want my neighbors to stay here and I want everyone to have that choice.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Kim Barron, followed by Sarah Davis, followed by Brendan Carroll.
Hi, my name is Kim Barron. I teach at Washington School. The average starting salary in Santa Barbara Unified is $61,000 a year. After paying taxes, that leaves $46,000 to live on. The median rent in Santa Barbara for a one-bedroom apartment is $3,500. Do the math. If you have worked eight years in the district, after rent, you will have about $23,000 left over for healthcare, food, utilities, childcare, insurance, gas, and car payments. This doesn't include anything other than bare necessities. Many teachers in this district are considered low-income or very low-income based on the cost of housing in our town. Our district should be ashamed of this. It is unreasonable to expect a prof, it is unreasonable to expect a professional to be able to have their own apartment, or is it unreasonable, without having roommates? The very top of the teacher pay scale is $160,000. That is now the average salary in Los Angeles after they averted a strike last year and renegotiated their contract. We need a 10% cost of living increase right now to get the same purchasing power that we had three years ago. That means that right now, we are 10% poorer than we were in 2020.
20 seconds.
I can't even find another district in California that is so grossly underpaid compared to housing costs. None of you on the board are at the top levels of the district admin or low-income. Why should teachers be?
Thank you. Next up, Sarah Davis.
I'm used to talking to third graders, so if you all could fidget, it would help me a lot. Hello. This is my 12th year teaching at Roosevelt Elementary. I wanted to speak tonight to remind everyone that we are part of this district together and that we all have the same goal. Every child, every chance, every day. I challenge you to find an educator that does not agree with that. The difficulty is that we do not have the tools and support needed to meet that goal. When someone has to drive hours each day to a place that they can afford to live, when someone has to work a second job to afford housing, when there's not enough time in the day to plan for lessons and contact family, when key positions are not filled, when we see colleagues and friends leaving year after year, it makes it almost impossible to be there every single time. But we keep trying and now the stress and frustration of not being able to do our jobs to the best of our ability is overwhelming. I ask that this year during negotiations, the driving question is, how can we get educators the support they need so that they can be there for the students? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adani Coronado, followed by Mercedes Murphy. Welcome, Brendan.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brendan Carroll. I teach at Franklin School. We're used to teaching, working in front of kids too, so adults is kind of a special occasion. I've been in the district over 25 years and I've certainly seen more administrators come and go than teachers and I think that speaks to our dedication. And for me, I'm not so much up here as for the people that are, I'm sorry, I'm so emotional, but I'm up here for us and for the profession, really. There's not enough teachers going into graduate school and there's not enough young teachers staying in, as we've heard. So I'm up here tonight saying that you have the control of the purse strings and that if you value public education, as we all do, I think it's the greatest invention America ever came up with, that we need to give material support to teachers because we can't survive and think and be creative when we're constantly looking over our shoulder or opening the next bill and wondering if we're going to make it. So please give us the material support we need so we can be the best we can be with the students. And I plan to be here a lot longer too, but I just appreciate that any support you can give us honors us and all the teachers that want to come into this profession to show them it's something we take seriously and it's something worth putting your life into. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Adani Coronado and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Franklin Elementary. I'm here to say that I'm excited to hear that the district is open to negotiating all parts of the contract, including salary and benefits, on November 15th. Many teachers are having a hard time making ends meet and if the district does not come ready to, with counterproposals on the 15th, it speaks volumes. To us, you're saying that even though you have the means to help, you don't care about our situation. You don't care about our health concerns, our inability to afford to live in town, or all the extra hours we put in beyond the workday. As you all may have noticed, I hobbled into the boardroom today with a walking boot. I tore my Achilles the week before school started. I had surgery on the third day of school and was back to school five days later. All this after having knee surgery nine months prior. In a job with stronger benefits and more adequate salary, an employee would not feel the need to be back at work after major surgery in such a short amount of time. But I did because the bills were terrifying based on what I earned. I guarantee that many of the teachers here would do the same thing. They shouldn't have to. Let me put into perspective what that looks like financially. Over $700 in emergency room bills, over $3,000 in surgery costs, and over four, and another $400 to $500 in doctor's visits. This is just one example of the many hardships that we teachers go through. I could go on about rent or the other countless hours of travel because we can't afford to live here, but it seems like none of us, none of that matters to you. I urge you to consider coming ready with counterproposals on the 15th.
Thank you.
SBTA is ready to negotiate since October.
Next is Mercedes Murphy, followed by Stephen Hughes, followed by Belinda White. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. I am here tonight to speak as a teacher new to the profession. This is my third year as an elementary educator. I am also a fourth-generation Santa Barbara resident and teach at the elementary school that my mother attended in the 50s and that my grandmother attended, attended in the 30s. My mother also served as a paraeducator in the district for many years. To say the very least, I care about this community and want to keep teaching here, though like most of the new teachers I talk to, I am having serious doubts that I will be able to do so. I'm here tonight because I have invested a lot to be a teacher. I gave up my small business to go back to school in my early 30s to get my master's because I know that education is my calling. I'm here because I love my job, my school, and my students. And I am here to basically plead with you, as one of the wealthiest communities in the entire country, to pay your teachers a living wage. And of course, to give our students the support they deserve and are entitled to. We have heard about how many special needs students are not getting the services that they need because plain and simple, you will not pay paraeducators enough to take and keep this demanding job. I see how this situation plays out on a regular basis at my own site where students have gotten injured because they were not enough paraeducators to supervise students with IEPs. I myself got a severely autistic student last year and because we did not have enough aids and because our sped teachers' caseload was already overextended, he remained in my classroom with absolutely no services for two months, which you can imagine was extremely difficult for him and for my other students.
Thank you.
I would love nothing more than to keep teaching at my school and serving this community for years to come, but this board is making it impossible to do so.
Next, we have Stephen Hughes, followed by Belinda White.
Will the next speaker please come up to the podium? Stephen?
Stephen Hughes?
Nope.
Okay.
Next.
Belinda White? Oh, he's coming.
And the next one is Ms. Belinda White, if you could please come to the podium.
Before the pandemic, for many years running, Santa Barbara was honored with an award, NAMM's 100 Best Communities for Music Education. This award came largely on the strength of its elementary music program in which every elementary, every elementary schooler plays an instrument, 4th through 6th grade. Right now, the strength of that program is at risk. Two elementary positions at Harding and Roosevelt aren't filled. This despite the fact that there are many student teachers in music capable of teaching these classes on emergency credentials, right now. Additionally, at some of the junior high schools, some students can't access classes to continue their learning. At SBJH, if you need math support, English support, or are just in 7th grade, you can't fit music into your schedule. Of course, this trickles up to the high school, where at SBHS, there are 32 students in the marching band in a school of over 2,000. When our students perform, the community gets to judge their learning. You don't need to know anything about music to have an opinion about the band, the teacher, the program, or for that matter, the school and the district. The district is happy to accept awards for music, but are they happy to?
20 seconds.
Thank you. Are they happy to help the music teachers earn those awards? There are four junior high music teachers and three of them are part-time at their schools. Two of them are teaching split positions, wasting part of their money on gas, driving to the other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rita Newhouse. Wait, actually, Belinda White, followed by Rita Newhouse, followed by Myra Osagüera. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Pigeon White. My, I have been teaching for 26 years in the district. My mother was also a teacher in the district for 30 years at Dos Plazos, Carol Pigeon, and her quality of life is very different than the quality of life that I have. She was able to have healthcare and buy a house in this town, free healthcare, sorry, which we do not have. This is no longer the case. I have loved my profession, but I am now saddened to hear that you do not value our profession enough to increase our salary to a Santa Barbara living wage so that we can retain our teachers. The district's choice to underpay us compared to our neighboring districts has a direct impact on burnout and dissatisfaction. My colleague and I have had the maximum caseload of 150 students for the last three years. The veteran teachers have been forced to not only teach an ever-changing flow of young teachers, but that leave after three years when they've cleared their credential, but take on a huge class size due to the fact that we cannot retain anyone at our salary scale. Please, restructure the pay scale so that finding and retaining classroom teachers becomes a priority. There are far too much money spent on non-teaching positions and consulting services. Our students need teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Newhouse, followed by Myra Osagüera. Do we have Rita Newhouse?
Here she comes.
Ian Walker, wait. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Students deserve high-quality, experienced educators, yet SBUSD is a revolving door, losing 100 educators a year to other districts. And educators' working conditions are students' learning conditions. SBTA is ready to negotiate. Esteemed, excuse me, esteemed school board members, please direct the district to come to the table ready to talk numbers now. Please direct John Beckio and Superintendent Maldonado to open negotiations with SBTA on the entire contract so we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact on our schools and our students. Holding a negotiations meeting without the intention of negotiating money is a waste of precious time. Hold a special meeting this week to open negotiations with SBTA. Hold a special meeting next week to look at the budget. Changes are urgently needed. The students are the ones paying the price for vacant positions, underqualified staff, shrinking elective, electives options?
20 seconds.
Inequity across school sites, missing teacher librarians at every elementary school. SBTA is asking to negotiate on urgent matters affecting students. If the district does not resolve these issues and finish negotiations before the next hiring cycle in spring, our teachers will continue to interview with other districts and the crisis we are now in will become even worse.
Thank you. Welcome.
Buenas noches, yo voy a hablar en español. Mi nombre es Myra Osagüera y tengo un estudiante en Santa Barbara High School y es un estudiante con necesidades especiales. Gracias por mandar el correo electrónico donde decía que iban a empezar las negociaciones. Por esa razón estoy aquí el día de hoy. Y quiero pedirle a cada uno de ustedes que consideren negociar los salarios de nuestros maestros. Porque tenemos maestros que hacen el trabajo de tres personas en una. Manejan casos, hacen como sustitutos de maestros y aparte tienen que enseñar. Tenemos estudiantes que no tienen IEPs escritos porque no están recibiendo los servicios y no hay quien los escriba. Sé que han tratado de proveer servicios de agencias externas, pero esto ha sido una cura corta que no ha solucionado el problema.
Thank you.
Y necesitamos invertir en nuestros maestros locales para que esto pueda ser sustentable y que los estudiantes reciban la mejor educación. Gracias.
Thank you. Do we have our translation services?
Yes, sorry, I missed half of the message, but my name is Myra Osagüera and I'm the mother of a student in special education. I'm here to ask you, to ask each of you to take into consideration during the negotiations, the cost of life, especially in Santa Barbara. The lack of a sustainable salary has impacted seriously our students in special education, given the loss of teachers that do the job of three-in-one. Teaching, managing the cases, and as paraeducators, the services that are documented in the IEPs and cannot be provided for lack of staff. The contracting in external agencies has been a solution, but at a high cost. It's not stable and it's higher cost. Please consider to put your money, resources in our professions, our local professionals. Sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Gracias, señora. Gracias por sus comentarios.
Next, we have two virtual public commenters. The first is Connie Alexander, followed by Bianca Duran. Do we have Ms. Alexander online? Okay.
Good evening, board. I am coming to you, I hope you can hear me, I'm coming to you, to speak about Connie Alexander with the Santa Barbara NAACP. I'm coming to speak about the violence that one of our students experienced last week, one of our black students who was beat up, kicked in the head. One of the kids who's at the junior high, I spoke to his mother several times as of today at 11:30 and she's going to get on and talk about what has happened to her son. She has needs support services, he needs counseling intervention, and she's waiting to hear. And so this is sad. It's sad that we have to keep coming and having these conversations. I don't even like to say these things out loud. One of our, one of our high school students was talking about being called the N-word, violently then told in the middle of all of it by the teacher, "Oh, take that outside", which kind of sanctions the violence of all of it. So we have a lot of work to do, don't we? We do. We have a lot of work to do. And so I am begging that this, that these families get more support. I am begging that the sites get more support when something happens, when something happens to this level, they need immediate attention. It's been a week and the student still hasn't gotten what he needs. Fairness, fairness is when you get what it is that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public commenter for tonight is Bianca Duran.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Bianca Duran and I'm here to speak on behalf of my son, a student at Santa Bar, a student of Santa Barbara School District. He was assaulted during school hours, unprovoked. He was not only punched repeatedly, he was also kicked in the head repeatedly as well. Actions were taken against the students who did this, but he Actions were taken against the students who did this, but here I have my child struggling to comprehend what has happened. No services were offered to help him with this ordeal. My son is a victim. I absolutely loathe to say that. A school is a place where he should be safe and not have to be there in fear of violence. It is his home away from home. How can I trust the district when things like this happen every day to many students, not only my own? We hear plans and measures to help, but we need action now. We need support for our students, and we need them to be safe above all. I will continue to advocate for children. I would continue to advocate for my children and any other child till they can feel safe and protected at school. Please do not fail these children. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you for being here tonight. We do hear you, and we appreciate your comments. Feel free to send emails if you didn't get a chance to speak. And Dr. Maldonado, would you please follow up on that last comment and inform the board?
Yes, I just got a message that they have met, and I will send the board a report later today.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move with our regular agenda items, with item E, the consent agenda. Do any of the board members want to pull any items from the consent agenda? No? Dr. Maldonado, are there any agenda items? No? If you will note, there are seventeen items on the consent agenda, and I know that the board members had an opportunity to ask questions ahead of time, so if there are no questions or no comments, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we move to the action agenda, and, so who is our next presenter? Ms. Hernandez, would you please come to the podium for F1? Thank you.
Good evening. So, the item that I'm going to talk about tonight is probably unfamiliar to most of you, because I don't think that we have ever asked for this waiver in the past. Wait just a second to the, okay. And so, this is, as far as I know, we haven't. So, as a unified school district, we are required to use a total of the total expenditures of our general fund expenditures, fifty-five percent of them are supposed to go to teachers' salaries. And as you know, eighty-one point three percent of our general fund just goes to our salaries and benefits of all of our staff. So, the majority of our budget does go to paying for our people. In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this last school year, our expenditures that we're required to use for our COVID funds to protect our students, to protect our staff, and to recover from a global pandemic, increased the total expenditures that we had to pay for the year. So, the state and the federal government gave us some, you know, COVID funds, and they directed us as to how to spend them. So, we spent them for cleaning, for PPE, you know, the masks and the air filters and all those things. We had money for after-school programs to help with learning recovery. We had money for mental health, and we spent all of these funds exactly as we were directed to. And we also paid for technology to ensure that all of our staff and our students had the computers that they needed in order to learn during these challenging times of the COVID years. And also on top of that, because of COVID, we had staffing shortages, as we've talked about several times in here, and we were short. Specifically, some of the bigger ones were for custodians, that we had a hard time filling those positions, and we needed them for the deep cleaning for COVID and keeping our classes clean. And we had a tough time hiring paraeducators and bus drivers, just specifically because of COVID. So, for all of those areas, we ended up having to go to other agencies to help fill our holes, because we still needed to get the job done. And on top of that, because of COVID, we had inflationary costs, just like everyone else did, and which drove our utility costs much higher than they were in a normal year. So, all of these extra costs that we needed to pay because of COVID caused our expenditures to increase. And because of that, that increase in the expenditures caused the percentage that was paid to the classroom teachers to go from fifty-five percent, which is our requirement, to fifty-one point eight-two percent. So, I want to be really clear. We did not pay teachers less. We did not reduce staffing for our teachers, and we did not reduce our standards for paying for our teachers. And so, to prove that, we had a report done of comparable teacher salaries that the School Services of California did for us, and I have attached that there as one of the items there as part of our board note, to just show that we didn't reduce any costs there for our teachers, and we are very comparable to a lot of the Unified School Districts. But we did slip from fifty-five percent to the fifty-one point eight-two percent just due to the increase in the expenditures. But we didn't reduce the amount we paid teachers. In fact, since before COVID, since 2019, we actually paid teachers thirteen million dollars more than we were paying prior to COVID. And all of this analysis doesn't include the four percent that we paid teachers starting in July of this year, and it doesn't include the thousand-dollar stipend that we also paid them this year. But because we slipped because of this, going from fifty-five to fifty-one point eight-two percent, we, like many school districts across the state, because of this growth in the expenditures that we were required to do because of COVID, we are now requesting a waiver. So, this waiver is something that you would vote on, and that it would go to our county education office to review and to decide if we actually can get the waiver. But as I've said, there are many, many school districts who are in the same boat.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Excellent job explaining the difference and the criteria. I think this is an excellent example of why amounts are more important than percentages, right? Because percentages may be deceiving. And I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that we actually spent thirteen million dollars more than we did before. I was not aware of that. So, thank you. Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval if there are no other questions?
I'll move to approve the application for the exemption from required CEA waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have number two, approval of UCSB Gervt's Graduate School of Education in Santa Barbara Unified School District Memorandum of Understanding to Partner in the Creation of the Harding Community Resource Center, and this is Mr. Vence.
Good evening. I'm pleased to bring to you this evening the MOU with UCSB, specifically the Gervt's Graduate School of Education and the school district. So, this formalizes our work that we're going to be moving ahead with that school, with graduate school, along with the work that we're doing at Harding University Partnership School. The focus really of this MOU is specifically on the fundraising of the creation of the Harding Community Resource Center. So, in October of 2022, working with Dean Milam at the school, we were able to put together the renderings from KBZ regarding the center. And so, with that in hand, the university, specifically the graduate school, will support the fundraising in terms of helping us build this Community Resource Center on the West Side. The agreement has three parts to it. It's the fundraising agreement specifically. It discusses how the funds would go directly to district or would go to a third party, for example, like it would go to Santa Barbara Education Foundation to be the holder of the funds. The funds would be used for construction specifically, as well as that the construction will not begin until we have the complete amount ready to cover the cost of construction. The last part of this section is actually in case the project does not follow through, that the funds would specifically, would be determined, basically the university as well as the district would determine how to use the funds if they decide not to proceed with the community center. The second part of the agreement is the community services part, just spelling out how we will do data sharing and information sharing, making sure that we're following proper protocols, and streamlining the work that we're doing at the university, or, excuse me, at the school district with the university. And then the last one is just the agreement specifically addressing Harding Community Resource Center, and that would be for making sure that the university assumes liability and costs of the actions that they would be doing and supports activities they'd be doing at the center, as well as the university, or, excuse me, the school district would be responsible for the facilities and the taking care of the facilities. The last thing I would say is the contract is renewed annually, so we would be coming to you next year. So, we bring this to you. Last time we had MOU, it was, it ended in 2020. So, and that's my report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Hugh? No? Any comments or questions from the board? No, no comments, no questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Vence, for your presentation, and do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
I'll move to approve the UCSB Gervt's Graduate School and SB Unified Memorandum of Understanding to Partner in the Creation of the Harding Community Resource Center.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Vence. Next, we move to appointment of chief labor negotiator for Board of Education. And is this Dr. Beckio or Ms. Dr. Maldonado?
I will present it. I'm asking the board to approve Dr. Beckio as our chief labor negotiator for collective bargaining with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association and the California School Employees
Any public comment? Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion to approve Dr. Beckio as the chief labor negotiator as presented?
I make the motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Beckio as the chief labor negotiator for SBTA and CSEA.
My second thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We move to number four, approval of human resources recommendations, and I believe that is Dr. Beckio.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Vice President Alvarez and board members and Superintendent Maldonado. I bring before you the human resources recommendations for this board meeting, and as usual, I'd just like to point out a couple highlights before I turn it over to you for consideration. I did want to have you look down, about halfway down the list, on the first page are promotions, and we have Cindy Abraham promoting to school health assistant, Andrew Gerbeck promoting to senior plumber from a plumber position, Abraham Ochoa Solis promoting to ES para, and Suzanne Valenzuela to purchasing buyer from a purchasing tech, and Linde Villa to an administrative secretary III. So, congratulations to those classified employees for their promotion opportunities. I also wanted to just point out to you on the last page, as I usually do, just showing our appreciation for the language services premium that has either been added new to an employee because they passed the test, or there's been an increase because they passed that at a higher level, and that is Mariela Casares Flores, Victor Chavez, Andrea Cardova Mesa, Laura Cuevas Otreras, Mitzi De La Luz Vargas, Jessica Garcia, Jessica Godinez, Valerie Huerta, Maria Maganda Gallardo, Leticia Quezada, Brandon Vargas, and Cassandra Zuniga. Congratulations to them, and we thank them for their service in that space. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any questions you might have.
Any public comment? No? Questions or comments from the board? I'm happy to see that we continue to hire teachers. I see that you bring in two special ed teachers forward, so thank you for your work on that. And it's also very rewarding to see that we are promoting within, which is in guidance with our mission to support our current staff, so thank you for doing that. And if there are no questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items as presented?
I move to approve the human resources recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we move to approval of revised classified salary schedules from 2015 to 2016 through present. Is this you also, Dr. Beckio? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and this item is only classified schedules, so you'll notice the large number of schedules that I uploaded to the board item. We will always bring salary schedules to you to approve when there's an update, and the reason for that is that it's very important that we are paying people according to a board-approved salary schedule with the right job titles and pay ranges. And so, I just wanted to let you know that you may see salary schedules from time to time as we add new job classifications. But this particular item is referencing a CalPERS audit, and essentially, to just summarize for you, we have, our salary schedule has hourly rates. Most people go by the hourly rates, and in fact, we calculate a salary for the employee based on the hourly rate. We then divide that by twelve to give an equalized payment every month, so our employees can get the same paycheck every month. CalPERS is, wants us either to use the hourly rate and pay people for the hours that they served in the month that they served those hours, which would cause an employee to have varying paychecks every month, or list the monthly salary amount on the salary schedule so we can reference that and pay them the right monthly salary. And the way we would do that is we use the hourly rate, multiply it by the two thousand eighty hours, I believe it is, and then divide that by twelve. And so, what you see here is our salary schedules that have the monthly salary rate on them, and so, once those get board-approved, we will be up to speed with CalPERS on making sure our employees are paid properly, attached to the proper salary schedule. So, that's a summary of this item. Happy to turn it over to you and take any questions that you might have.
Do we have any public comment? No? Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Dr. Beckio. What is CalPERS' interest in making us highlight the monthly payout versus using, basically changing the way that we had listed it previously?
Well, the best of my knowledge, it all has to do with the service credit that they grant employees. And so, they're constantly, they're calculating the service credit that was done over the course of years and making sure that it's accurate. And so, and in addition, they want to make sure that the amounts people were paid are not inflated in any way, that they're always attached to the salary schedule, and that in this case, they're calculated based on the two thousand eighty hours in a year. And so, that's the reason for all of this. And so that's the reason for all of this, but it has to do with making sure they're paid appropriately by board-approved amounts and not, you know, somehow someone in the district gave this person a little bit more that boosted their income so that they could retire with a more, a larger amount. So always that it's attached there, and that the service credit is calculated appropriately.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Banning?
Prior to these changes, were full-time employees being paid a monthly salary? Is the difference just that it wasn't in writing somewhere?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a change in practice at all?
It's not a change in practice. The only change in practice is that we are adding the monthly amounts. Actually, we had the monthly amounts on the salary schedules in a previous year. I forget which year we started to do that. It was another CalPERS issue. But the way in which we're calculating it, they want us to attach the hourly rate to the 2,080 hours, because that's their service credit hours, and then back down into the monthly salary that way. And instead of using the hourly rate and calculating it by the number of days and hours in a day, et cetera.
So for employees that are not full-time employees, are they, are they being paid a prorated portion of the monthly salary, or is it on a truly an hourly basis for those employees?
We will get their, we will actually equalize their payments as well, so we'll calculate that back based on the number of hours they work in a nine, 10, or 11 a month calendar.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board members? I do have a couple of questions. Are any employees impacted by this change where we paying them properly before this audit?
Yes, no one's, no one's pay will be affected. What we are actually looking into, though, is to make sure that service credit is right for all employees. So for example, 2,080 hours equals 261 days, I believe. And so the calendar is sometimes 260, sometimes it's 262. And so what we have to do is go back and kind of look at each employee and what the days we calculated the hours based on, and whether there was, there may have been overpayment in terms of the 2,080 hours number, but we wouldn't, we would never take that money back. They worked it and they earned it. But we have to look at service credit. That's what we're most intentionally looking at right now and doing an analysis on.
Yeah, that was my main concern about their service credit being impacted. And if it's found that their service credit was impacted, is there the possibility that the district might have to pay more into CalPERS because it wasn't calculated properly?
I don't believe so, but it could impact, so for example, if there was a year where there was 262 days and the service credit was reported as 262, CalPERS only accepts 2,080 hours, which is based on 261. So there could be a difference in one day there. So we have to look at that. We also want to look at the impact that it has on nine and 10 and 11-month employees because their service credit is based on the 2,080 hours and a percentage of that. And if we were using 262 days, it would be eight hours more than what the 2,080 hours is.
Right.
So there could be some impact on recent retirees or individuals that are retiring here in the next few years where they were under this calendar year that might have been 261 days.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, CalPERS passed the rule that if the employer made the mistake and there was an overpayment, the employer is liable for that. So not that you have to answer anything now, my wondering is if there might be a fiscal impact to the district, and that's something that sounds like you'll find out later.
Yeah, I could look into that. This is really a collaboration between our internal auditor, CalPERS, myself, our compliance person in HR, Kim Hernandez, and payroll. And so we're all looking at this, and we want to get the salary schedules right, and then we're going to start looking at what the impact may have been.
Yeah, it's, I know, it's a big job, so thank you for doing that, and keep us updated if there's any changes that we need to be aware of, so thank you. Is there a motion to approve the updated salary schedules? Oh, wait, hold on. She said there were no public comment. Yes. Is there a motion to approve the updated salary schedules per CalPERS direction?
Yes, I make the motion to approve the revised salary schedule from 2015 to 16 through the present.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio. Next is Mr. Ramirez. Approval of cybersecurity insurance policy with foundation risk partners.
Good evening, board, Vice President Ms. Alvarez, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. Thanks for having me tonight. So October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and now that we are all aware, I'd love to talk about cybersecurity. This item is actually referencing the approval of an additional policy for our cyber insurance risk and liability. There we go. So before I get into the policy and why and what it covers, I would like to kind of frame the current state of cybersecurity in K-12. As you know, it continues to be a pretty big concern in our industry, and many cybersecurity bad actors or threats target K-12 institutions because of our limited bandwidth, our limited resources, limited budget, but also because of our data. They want our data. They want to lock it down, encrypt it, and hold it against us at ransom. And this trend has been for many years, and as you know, many of our neighboring districts and counties have been hit. And so we are positioning ourselves as such to make sure this does not happen to us. Our approach to that is two-pronged, both proactive and reactive. Proactive, including all of our state-of-the-art gear as far as our firewall, our filters, our network security, and also our staff training and awareness, which we're hitting hard on right now. Also, we look at it in a reactive sense as well. What happens if we do get hit? Of course, we don't want to, but we do have to be prepared in that scenario. And so that involves planning, documentation, contacting resources. What do we need to do? Who needs to do, and when do we do that? We have done a lot over the last 12 months. Since I started, I think the first week, we formed a cyber task force and developed a cybersecurity roadmap, and we have made a lot of progress over the last year that I'm very proud of. We've deployed additional security on all of our devices, upgraded our content filtering, performed numerous internal and external audits of our systems to find where our gaps are and plug those holes. And like I mentioned, we've created many response plans in the event of those situations. I mentioned the staff training and awareness, and last but not least, our data. We've been looking very closely in on our data, where it resides, whether it's encrypted, whether it's backed up, and whether our backups have backups, right? And so we've done a lot of work, but in that work, we've also realized that we are not perfect. We're not impenetrable. We do not have dedicated staff members looking at our security every single day, so this is a shared responsibility for our entire team. So we went and looked at what other school districts were doing. We do have a insurance policy through our SISC, Self-Inured School Coverage, our general liability and risk, and it is a meager, a meager coverage amount. It would basically barely keep the lights on if we were to get attacked. And so we were looking for not only additional coverage, but for additional services that would really be an extension of our team to help us act in the event of some sort of attack or breach, and be nimble enough to get back up on our feet with minimal data loss and as soon as we possibly can. But in addition to that, what we're looking for is services that are going to, like I said, be a part of our team, so they'll help us and coach us through what our next steps are, so that this time next year, our premiums are decreased, saving us money in the future. Now, we reached out to various brokers, insurance brokers, and looked at seven different policies, and lo and behold, we got a very competitive rate with Crum and Forster, which allows us to have up to $2 million of coverage in these areas, on the slide here. And a couple of things I wanted to highlight is that does cover first-party and third-party. Third-party meaning the data, the companies that we share our data with, if they were to experience a breach and we were to incur any sort of business operation loss or reputation loss, that would be covered as well. Again, this covers all of the necessary resources to get back up on our feet as soon as possible. And I will say that the coverage amount that we landed on was carefully identified based on other districts our size and other districts that have been through a similar situation. So I urge the board, and I thank the board for your continuous support, and if you have any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Do we have any public comment? No? Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Scobetta?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. I know you said that our coverage with SISC is pretty small, all things considered, it wouldn't cover the impact of a data breach. Can we layer, even if that's the case, can we layer coverage so we can take advantage of SISC and we can take advantage of Crum and Forster?
Yes, in fact, our retention with this policy is $50,000, and that is the exact amount that SISC would coverage. So we would hit SISC up first, and then we'd hit up Crum and Forster.
Okay, perfect. And then with third-party, with third-party platforms or companies that we share data with, in our service agreements with them, is there also a liability on their part where we would also get financial compensation for any sort of impacts to the school district? To the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, no, I do not believe there's any sort of financial compensation tied to that. It is the law to keep our student data private and safe, so we do have contracts with all of our third-party vendors in which we share our data with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Munoz?
I appreciate the presentation and just, you know, preparing our school district to be safe in terms of cybersecurity. Thank you for your effort on this.
I do have a couple of questions. This covers all of our data at all of our school sites and all of our district office, our financial system, our payroll system, everything, including the kitchen sink, everything.
That is correct.
Okay.
Anything digital. There's a lot of line items within this coverage policy, including wire fraud and impersonation and things like that as well.
Great. Well, thank you for being so on top of this and vigilant about our cybersecurity. Really appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll move to approve this contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
The next item is item number seven, Approval of Resolution 2023-24-14, approving the guaranteed maximum price authorizing the contractor RSH Construction to proceed with construction and adopting the plans and specifications for the Galida Valley Junior High School Portable Replacement Project.
Good evening, Ms. Alvarez, the board members, Dr. Maldonado, cabinet members. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for the resolution number 2023-24-14. It started when on September 26th, the board approved the lease/leaseback contract documents for the Galida Valley Junior High School Portable Replacement Project. On the same day, the board also approved and authorized the execution for the site lease and facilities lease between the contractor RSH Construction, Inc. and the Santa Barbara Unified School District. So at this stage, the contractor, the contractor has completed the pre-construction services phase and has provided an updated cost estimate for construction, establishing a guaranteed maximum price for the project work at Galida Valley Junior High School, and their GMP cost estimate is based on the plans prepared by the district's architect, Kruger Benson-Zimmer. The contractor has presented a formal proposal for the GMP totaling $4,272,566. The contractor and the district have agreed to this guaranteed maximum price plus 10% contingency. With that, I would ask for your vote for approval for resolution 2023-24-14 for the guaranteed maximum price for the Galida Valley Junior High School project at $4,272,566, plus 10% contingency.
Thank you. Are there any public comment? Any questions or comments from the board? No? I did ask these questions ahead of time, and I appreciate your answer. I do want to repeat it because I think it's important. I asked about the duration of the project.
It's 13 months. It's going to begin on November 13th this year, provided that you will approve this resolution, and next year in 2024 in December.
And will they be in disruption to the classes?
No.
Are the principals on board? Everything is ready to go?
Absolutely, yes. The principal is on board, all the users are on board, and the community is on board. This is a good project to follow.
Thank you, I agree. I think it's a good project. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-24-14 as presented?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-24-14.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also have the next item, which was contingent on this resolution being approved. This is about the Division of State Architect Inspector for this project. Once we approve the project, we need the inspector that for Division, from Division of State Architect, and we have received a proposal from LG Inspection. This is formerly known as Leach Group. We have a lot of projects with them, and we have, you know, good relationship with them, and we appreciate their services to the district. The amount of that contract is $103,200, and I would kindly ask for your approval of that as well.
Are there any public comment? No? Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion to approve a proposal from LG Inspection from Division of State Architects for inspection services for the Galida Valley Junior High School Portable Replacement Project?
I'll move to approve the proposal from LG Inspection for Division of State Architects inspection services for the Galida Valley Junior High School Portable Replacement Project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we move to our report discussion agenda. Number one, Dr. Beckio, first reading, sunshining of Santa Barbara Unified School District's successor contract negotiations for the 2024-27 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Correct. Thank you very much, and good evening. I do want to, want to just let you know that in advance, I will be bringing the sunshine proposals three times. We do it in two board meetings, though, to get it done quicker. We're obligated to have the public hearing and then have it on the agenda again for public consumption, and then after those two times, we can have it be an action item. So at the next meeting, November 14th, we will have the sunshine proposals on, in two places on the agenda, and then the final one will be action. Once it's approved, then we're clear to begin negotiations. I do have the presentation that I like to begin with, just to make sure everyone is on the same page. Collective bargaining, this is just a primer here of collective bargaining, so this, it's really this act that established collective bargaining in California public schools. It was in 1976. Here are the types of negotiations, so there's successor contract negotiations. This is when you end your three-year, we had a three-year contract. We've ended that contract June 30th this coming year, 2024 will be the end of that contract. So right now, we're going to begin engaging in successor contract negotiations with both SBTA and CSEA for the new contract starting in July 1, 2024. There's reopen or contract negotiations, which is in between successor. If there's things that we want to reopen to look at in a contract, we can do that. And then there's effects bargaining, which, you know, the labor unions can, any decision we make that might impact the working conditions of employees, they have a right to request to bargain those impacts, and that's what we call impact bargaining or effects bargaining. And that's what we call impact bargaining or effects bargaining. And then this is really the board's role. You approve a chief labor negotiator. Thank you very much. I know you did that tonight for me. You provide guidance to me and superintendent throughout the process. We typically will have these discussions in closed session. And then you are the ultimate authority to approve both the Sunshine Proposals and any tentative agreements that come before you. So that's the quick primer of negotiations. Happy to answer questions if you have them. So what I want to do is present to you the SB Unified Sunshine Proposal. We did send this letter to SBTA. I do want to highlight, we gather input. We spent quite a bit of time gathering input. That is a process that we typically will engage with our management team, principals, classified management will engage with them in input sessions around, hey, what in the contract do you want us to focus on this year to look at change of language that might improve the conditions in our workplace? And so that is not a short process. That takes us usually several months to do that. And we did speed that up this year because we, again, our intention was to start negotiations early. We still did not set that process aside. We just sped it up so we could figure out what we wanted to focus on and then bring the Sunshine Proposal forward. So there was really no delay. This is our process. We actually did actually the opposite of delaying. We sped up our input process in order to get these forward to three or four months before we normally would. This is what we came up with. We believe Article 6, Hours and Conditions, there's a couple spots in there that we want to focus on. And I do want to point out to board members and the public that our contract language that we agreed with SBTA on mandates that we bargain wages this year. So it's right there in the letter. It says we bargain wages 23-24. They do know that. So I believe that they should know, even though we're sunshining articles, and this is what we're focused on. We have to bargain wages because it's in our previous agreement with them that we bargain in 23-24 for wages and benefits. So anyways, with that, I will turn it over to you for any questions that you might have.
Is there any public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Banning?
One of your slides mentioned that in, other than successor agreements, that there can be three reopeners. Is that number itself negotiable?
Yeah, that's in our contract that we agree, actually, what's interesting is in our contract is, previous contracts, is that we agree to open wages and benefits each year.
Right.
Okay? That's a given. Then you pick two other articles. We've actually done three in the past.
So wages and benefits plus three?
We've done three. We've also done wages and benefits plus two. So it is something that's negotiable. Like we had the previous contract we had, if you remember, was a three-year contract where both parties agreed to no reopeners for wages and benefits. And so that was negotiable. So now we no longer had the wages and benefits every year for reopeners and two other items. We had no reopeners for wages and benefits. However, with that, like I mentioned, we said no reopeners for wages and benefits. However, we are guaranteeing opening wages 23-24. So when you hear that we're not going to open wages, put it on our Sunshine Letter, well, we don't have an option to not bargain wages. It's in our contract that we agreed to them last time with.
And then the thing that makes a successor agreement different, because it's beginning a new cycle, not necessarily three years, but it could be, is that correct? Is the cycle necessarily another three-year cycle?
I don't believe so. We have always had three-year contracts here, but I do not believe we're mandated to have a three-year contract.
And the primary difference here is that the union or the district could open more than the limited number that happen in-between these times. So basically, they have the right to open any and all agreements that they want to. My question, well, I guess it comes when you're reading theirs. I have a question about their proposal.
Yeah, successor typically, the whole contract's going to be looked at for upgrades to the language.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for the work and the presentation. This is complicated emotionally and politically and legally to make sure that all the ducks are in a row. And it's not just a matter of what you want to do. There's many laws and regulations that guide how we're doing this.
Yeah, I'll mention, thank you for saying that. I'll mention that I've had quite a few years at the bargaining table. And it is, I wish it was as easy as come to the table, we got an agreement. But this is a process that takes some back and forth. It takes some cooperation between the two teams. It does take us really, and hopefully, everyone's engaging in the interest of the other party and looking at our budget, studying things after we get proposals, taking it back to our different stakeholders, particularly our management team, to see how that works. So the idea that we're going to come to the table and just all of a sudden, poof, there's an agreement, that's just not the way I've seen it work. It is a longer process than that to get to good agreements.
Right.
So, thank you.
Any other comments, board members? Thank you, Dr. Beckio. I do have a couple of clarifications. We sent out a communication saying that the whole contract is open. That was the communication that was sent out. So tell me a little bit more about that.
So in successor negotiations, basically, we're negotiating a brand-new contract. And so there'll be items in the contract under articles that no longer are really relevant because we don't operate that way anymore. And those could be mutually agreed upon to be struck from the contract. We'll go through and look at verbiage and language. We also will open articles that, we might find that there's articles under the SBTA Sunshine Letter and they find they want to open another one, and they might sunshine another one. So really, the contract is open to negotiate in successor negotiations. Whereas in reopeners, there is a defined limit. Typically, we've had a defined limit in the contract to the number of articles that they're allowed to open or were allowed to open to negotiate.
Great, thank you. Would you direct us where we can get a copy of the current contract? Is it on the drive or would you send it? I'd like to read the whole contract.
Yeah.
Not now, not now, but if you send it later.
Well, so if you go to our website and go to the employment tab, there's a labor relations tab. And it has the, remember, it's the 21 through 24 contract. And that was agreed to two and a half years ago or so, right? And so there's been negotiations since that time. And I believe you'll find links to updated agreements in-between. So you have to look at the contract, but also you have to look at maybe new language that overtakes a particular article in the contract that we negotiated.
Great, thank you. I think I probably have the original one from 2021, so thank you. So what I hear you say is that wages and benefits are pretty much automatic, that's open, it doesn't have to be on the district Sunshine Letter.
That's correct. And in fact, it's in our agreement with SBTA that we must in 23-24 open wages and benefits anew.
Great, thank you. And thank you for being responsible. I know negotiations are a very long, long process. And to get a responsible agreement, that's what it takes. So thank you for doing that. If there are no other questions or comments, we go to the next item, which is First Reading, Sunshining of the Santa Barbara Teachers Associations for the Successor Contract Negotiations for the 24-27 Collected Bargaining Agreement with the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Okay, so what I've brought forward for public viewing is the Sunshine Proposal sent to us by SBTA and their intention to open Articles 4, 5, 6, and 9. And you'll see that in their letter. It is wages and compensation, health and welfare, hours and conditions, special needs students. And you'll notice that SBTA reserves the right to sunshine other specific articles. So that kind of answers the earlier question where we may get another Sunshine Proposal where they want to open another article in the contract, and they're perfectly within their right to do that. So this is their letter presented. Again, I'll bring this back again to the next board meeting as another public item, and then we'll have action item for their approvals.
Are there any requests to speak? Any questions or comments from the board?
Going back to my earlier comments about opening articles and such, it appears that there are two places in this letter that they're saying the same thing. And I just want to make sure that I'm not reading too little into this. The paragraph before the bullet says, "Wants to sunshine the following articles and any and all articles in the Table of Contents." And then again, it says, "Reserves the right to sunshine other specific articles in the future." So is that just a redundancy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Scobeta?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on that. So if I understand this correctly, if they decide in the future to send us another letter like this and highlight other articles, do we have to go through the same process? Or does that sentence at the beginning cover sunshining all of the articles? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do. That's a great question. I'd really have to consult our legal counsel on that, whether that gives the right to not have to go back through the Sunshine Proposal.
Can you let us know when you find out? Thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to also mention on this Sunshine Proposal, just for the public to be aware and the board, is that these, most of the time, and many of these articles and proposals that are going to be brought forward have some sort of dollar amount attached to them. They cost money to do most proposals. So it is very difficult. Why I say it is not just come to the table once and poof, we have an agreement on compensation or benefits, is because we expect there's going to be proposals that are brought forward that have nothing to do with wages or benefits that actually cost a significant amount of money. And so you cannot just negotiate in isolation on one thing, and then you have all these other proposals that cost upwards of several million dollars sometimes. And so we have to take all these things into consideration when we're negotiating. And that's why it becomes very tedious. We have presented SBTA with numerous dates, not just the three prior to winter break, but numerous dates after January, after the winter break, January, February, March, because we know this kind of thing is a whole contract negotiation. It probably will have a lot of money attached to all the proposals, and it will take us some time to work through. So we aren't refusing to negotiate anything until January or whatever. We are looking forward to whatever proposals come forward, but they understand the process is there's going to be many proposals and we have to consider the type of money asks that are happening with each of them. So I wanted to make sure that was clear as I present their Sunshine Proposal.
Any other comments or questions? I do have a wondering here. If they reserve the right to sunshine topics, what's the deadline? There has to be a deadline because if we're this close to settling and then a new proposal comes forward, then what happens?
Right, well, that's something that I'll be having to work through in the negotiation process with respect to any new proposals that are coming forward. What's the timeline on that? And obviously, if we're going to get to agreement, we, in some ways, might need some assurances that there's not going to be proposals coming forward that are worth several million more dollars. But that's just something I have to work through in the negotiation process on.
Great. Every proposal has to be evaluated of how much it would cost. So I would imagine nothing gets approved until the sunshining has been completed.
Well, we won't start negotiations until the Sunshine Proposals are approved. And that's the 15th of November. But remember that any agreement we reach is tentative and it's pending board approval. And on their side as well, they need to get their membership to ratify the tentative agreements they reach. So even if we reach an agreement at the table, those have to come before the board for approval. And so it might be the board would likely want to see, well, what are all your tentative agreements? So we can consider what the impact on the district's going to be with all the agreements you've reached. And that's typically how it works, and we bring them all before you for approval at some point.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Beckio.
Okay.
Now, we move to the next item, Addressing Hateful, Biased, and Anti-Black Language and Actions Report. Mr. Benz?
I will present to you this month's report on the initiative that we're taking on addressing hateful bias, anti-black language and actions. Next slide, please. Or here's the clicker, sorry. Creature of habit. So this is the work that we are doing. And as you could see, Module 1 was completed September 30th. That was, I gave you a report last month, and we had one school that had not delivered the module yet, and they did deliver the module to the staff. So we did complete it at all schools. At the same time, we sent out two modules, an anti-racist and anti-bias module through human resources. And it's part of the expectation for employees to get this training. And so that was due by September 22nd, and I'll show you data regarding that. The next thing that we are in the process of doing is we actually started the work, which is Module 2, which is actually the deepening and the strengthening of this work with our staff. What we are focusing on specifically is the response to actions. So when they see, when they recognize an action, when they see an action or language being used, then they know, they will have multiple ways to respond to it. So that's what we will be specifically focusing on. One of the things that is in the module is that they will actually work through scenarios. They will work with their colleagues through various scenarios that they would possibly witness, and then work through responses in terms of how they would address it. The module itself is broken down into small sizes or byte sizes to allow administrators to deliver sections of the module so they don't have to deliver the module all in one sitting with the staff. That was one of the things that we heard, the concern of time constraints, as well as making sure that we do it regularly. So we introduced it to our principals, and they will start rolling it out. The other item that I want to point out in particular with this is we went through the process with leadership at the school, and they selected equity leads at the school so we could have and develop an equity team across the district. And that way, we could start addressing this work from the school side as well as doing it from the district down. We had our meeting with our equity leads, as it says, on October 12th for the first time. We will continue to start the work by engaging with them to review instructional materials as well as lesson plans that they would be able to bring to their colleagues and start to roll in education within the classrooms. So it's not just the recognize, respond, and report process, but it's actually the proactive work involved in terms of eliminating this and educating our students. And then the third part is we still need Uh, and then the third part is we still need to start the work, uh, creating the student, uh, ally groups, and that's something that we were planning on moving ahead with. Our next meeting is with, uh, Oversight Committee will be on November eighth. Uh, it will be here at the school district. Uh, they, the, we've been in communication specifically with the Oversight Committee's chairperson. They selected their chair for the committee, Michelle Pettigrew, so she'll be the, the representative for the committee. Um, and we were able to meet with her and discuss more of the things that they would like to see us working on. All right. Uh, as I mentioned, the HSI, uh, module that's sent out to district, all district staff, as you could see, the completion rate, and we still have, uh, about twelve percent of our staff who still need to finish the training. Some of that includes, uh, those numbers do include new staff members who are coming into the district. They have thirty days to, to complete that training. So one of the things that we are focusing on, I know with Dr. Beckio and his team, is that they've been distributing to, uh, district leaders at all the schools of those, uh, staff members who have not completed the modules, so that the, our leadership can follow up with staff to make sure that they complete the module. Looking at the reports, we compared from, we based it on the number of school days from the last time we reported to this current time. Uh, we had thirty days from the beginning of school to the report that we provided to you, and this time we have twenty-five actual school days. And of course, we do not count vacation days or obviously weekends. What we're noticing specifically is that the majority of the things that we're witnessing at the school sites and that, that are being reported are verbal, verbal interactions. Uh, and then we have, we've added social media. We had one incident that was on social media. One of the things that we are starting to, to keep track of is not only the incidents, but also the responses that are occurring. And so what you'll notice specifically is that we did have an increase, by the way, the twenty, again, just to remind everybody, we had twenty-five reports. One report would, could easily include direct conversation with the student and also have family involvement and also have administrative involvement, and that would count for each. So we're counting every time, uh, and one of those things that occurs, um, from the report. As you'll notice, that, uh, direct responses are increasing, which is important to see because we expect, um, our staff to respond directly to what they're witnessing and observing. One of the things that we noticed and meeting, we're meeting regularly with, um, Assistant Superintendent Edison to discuss the follow-up of, of incidents or the follow-up of, of these things that are occurring at the district. Because what we're noticing is that the report will go out, but we're not, there might be a report that doesn't come back to us to say that it was, you know, referred to the administrator. It's not a suspension or expulsion, so we, we're not sure of the response. So we're creating, or we actually created the digital system that will send to the administrator after we see the report and just to make sure that we get the follow-up report from Another item regarding data is that, um, one thing that we just finished was the panorama surveys, and, uh, that was finished in October, or the, October sixth. Uh, this data in particular, this has to do, when it's, uh, it's, the questions were delivered to, as you could see, the percentage teachers and then staff, meaning staff would be classified staff at the district. So that's what those percentages are. Just to be aware, this is a baseline, so this is going to help us to determine what impact that we're having with our, with our teachers and staff. So we're using this to track that, uh, and as you could see, the spring survey will start on May, or excuse me, March fourth and close on March twenty-second. So we can see specifically the impact that we're, that's occurring in the schools. One of the things that pop out, which is interesting, is that at our, at your school, how often are you encouraged to think more deeply about racial or race-related topics? And you see the percentages high. However, you'll notice that we still have much work to do when it's, when it has to do specifically addressing these, you know, any race-related topics or incidents or to speak out, there's much work left to do. So that's, that's data. One other thing that we'll be doing with, um, with medicine, uh, Ms. Edison in particular is going through the student questions and to drill down and pull some of the student questions and use some of those questions as a baseline as well as, um, to follow up to see the, you know, the implementation data in March. These are some of the additional items that we've been focusing on. There are two things in particular that I want to bring up to your attention, and that would be, on the right, you'll see supports and resources. Well, we've started this past, um, with the help of Ms. Pilhofer, uh, working with York There started, they've launched a culturally linguistic responsive curriculum committee. Um, and what they will be doing specifically is reviewing the WIT Wisdom Curriculum and seeing what, what is needed to support, um, and to address what came out of the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group recommendations, which is review our curriculum, see how we can infuse it with curriculum that looks like our children and to incorporate it, uh, in that manner. We also know that they met with, uh, Michelle, uh, who's a professor at UCSB, and they discussed of ways to help analyze the curriculum and possibility of engaging graduate students with this process as well. The other item that I just want to bring to your attention that will be coming up to the board, uh, at the next board meeting, uh, is the UCSB Healing Spaces. That, it's not a renewing of the MOU, that was my mistake. Actually, it's just, um, increasing the work that they would be doing, so providing professional learning and additional support. So that would be coming up in November. Uh, and so, and to leave it on a last note, as we heard tonight, we have much work still ahead of us, and, uh, that is my report at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benz. Do we have any requests to speak on this topic? No? Board members, any questions or comments?
I had a question about the QR code on the Recognize/Respond Report flyers, and if there's like a way that students can access the link to the Google form other than on the flyers, because, at least at DP, like, sometimes they're in like some of the classrooms, but they're not like in all the classrooms, and we've like had questions about that.
Um, I will look into that. I, I know that I've actually been talking with, uh, Tony about ways of distributing that, so let me, I will definitely look into, yeah.
We were thinking like maybe like getting it on like the iPads or...
And push it out.
Yeah, something similar to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great idea, coming from the students for the students. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Benz, for the presentation. A couple of quick questions. Um, first is for the student and staff affinity and ally groups. Is there an anticipated, um, start date for that? Is that something that, um, I mean, it's totally an acceptable answer. If it's next year, if it's off, you have a work plan for the rest of this academic year, and maybe that's beyond this current work plan, do you have an anticipated date?
What we're focusing on specifically is looking at launching it by, before the end of this, uh, not academic year, but calendar year. So doing it, uh, between November and December. So with that, so...
Perfect. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to highlight, uh, looking at the data on slide four about who is reported, and I've said this, I think, the last time that you presented, is it's encouraging to see how diverse the group of folks that are reporting. Um, it tells me that, well, it can definitely be better that we're getting it out to folks about how to report. It's easier to report. I remember the original form, it was kind of clunky, um, and so this is a really positive sign for me. Uh, on the next slide, it's slide five, and it's the one with the bar graphs, if, maybe we could pull it up for September and October?
Yes.
Um, can you tell me, are these responses for the person who inflicted the harm or the, the person who received the harm, the victim i- in the situation?
They're actually both. So what we did was we took off the explanation, well, we had, remember last time we gave it to you, we had it like in blocked and on a table with the explanations? So we'll figure out a way to continue with the explanations, so that way it makes it easy to discern. But, um, it's actually addressing both because we have school counselors, psychologists, and clinician support. That's not only for the student who was doing the action, but it's also for the student who was, um, who was being acted upon, right? Uh, we also have, that has to do with referral to, uh, external counseling, that also ties into healing spaces. Um, restorative action that would tie into, well, the restorative action would actually tie, what we're seeing for the most part, it's talking about the students who are d- um, doing the, the action.
Yeah.
Causing the harm, yeah.
I, I just want to highlight, I, and I think I mentioned this previously, I think this is really helpful because we heard a lot about accountability, and one of the responses that I had, and I think that the district as a whole had, is not every situation's the same, and so repairing harm looks different depending on the situation. So this is helpful in telling that story. One, um, thing that I might add that might be helpful for us, and I don't know how difficult it is, so maybe this is a longer-term thing, but it would be interesting to look, to separate the two. What are we doing for the students who were harmed versus the students who committed the harm? And I think that tells the story of accountability and what that looks like, and it looks like a variety of, of responses that we have listed on this chart, but also how are we supporting those students? It would be nice, uh, I think, and we probably have this information, but maybe we don't, because I think it's a self-referral program. How many students are we sending over to healing spaces? And how many families are being seen by them? And what sort of supports are we offering our students? Because I think that we're offering quite a, quite a few options for our students to fit their needs in these situations, and I think it would be helpful for us to see that, but also the community.
I, I, I agree with you. It's a great idea, it's so separating it so we can actually see what, what's happening. And also, I, the one thing that we would do as well as, uh, we, we would want to make sure that we don't do is compare, like, are we doing as many actions for one with the other? Because, uh, I know, like, reading through it myself, like, we see what we did with the first grader who happened to say the N-word, but was not, it was something completely different, or someone who's playing music by themselves that's, that's inappropriate, right? Things like that. So I, I think that it's good to separate it and to be clear and understand what actions we're doing according to also the, how old the students are and what it is, right?
Yeah, and I, I think that's a, a really reasonable answer and highlights a really important part, and I'll trust the cabinet and Dr. Maldonado to make that judgment call. It's a, um, something that I think would be helpful in telling that story, but how it's told and what it looks like, I think I'm going to rely on your expertise. And then the last thing that I wanted to highlight was, um, slide six where it talks about, uh, the survey that was given to staff and teachers?
Yes.
And just the fact that, um, I, I think for where we're at, the, it's really encouraging to see eighty-seven percent and seventy-nine percent about the fact that these are being discussed and people are aware of them. I think it's also understandable that many folks don't feel comfortable responding yet, and it's, it's focusing on yet. And the fact that we're, as we saw on what slide two, there's a plan in progress and that these things don't happen overnight, and so, um, not something to get complacent about, but I think it's really encouraging to see eighty-seven percent and seventy-nine percent on there. Um, the fact that it's at the front of people's minds and that it's being discussed regularly and becoming a more normal topic of discussion that hopefully allows for really fruitful learning opportunities for teachers and staff. So thank you all for, um, the good work that you're doing. I'm looking forward to hearing the report from the Oversight Committee in November. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Munoz?
Uh, yes, just a brief comment that the bar, you know, graph really helps in terms of understanding it. Um, I'm assuming that the classroom, like, for example, the classroom or assembly-based education on slide five, that it depends on the situation and how it's, you know, how you decide that's to be handled. Um, I really like the breakdown, you know, direct convers- uh, conversation, restorative action, et cetera, on that. And then, um, as Mr. Escobedo said, the, um, the responses to incidents in, on gra- uh, slide six, with how, um, folks feel comfortable about, you know, talking about racism and, you know, um, and such, I'd really interested in how, what the change, the difference is going to be between this survey and then the survey in March. Um, hoping to see, you know, an improvement in that. Um, and I think it's a great start, um, and then also, you know, um, appreciate the, the, um, the Oversight Committee looking at this and, and how we can best do for our district. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to add my thanks for the work that's going on. There's a lot of data on just these few slides, and, um, the way that we make sense of it is to keep it in front of us. Um, what we have here is a snapshot, whether it's two months or, or not, and, um, I appreciate the work that's going with it, going into it, and the intent and the action of keeping it in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benz. I do have a couple of, um, questions. Uh, if you, we go to slide number, I know, I believe it's slide number one, um, the equity lead teams, is that a, a representative from each school?
Yes, it is.
And how are those selected?
We, we communicated to the administration to see if there was anyone on campus who would be willing to take on this work. Uh, and we know, for example, at Santa Barbara High School, they have actually, they, um, carved out time for a person to actually do the work. So it's not just like we're coming in cold and starting this across the board, but there are also schools that haven't been doing it, so we're aligning it and leveraging those schools that are starting it as well as, um, those who, sorry, leveraging the schools that are doing the work, are investing in the work, and as well as bringing those who haven't started to bring them along, so...
And this leads to the, are they supporting other teachers, other staff members at their site? How are they interacting to support this work?
So, we just started this, and one of the things that we, we will be doing with them is providing the professional learning to build capacity with them. Lot of, right now, we're, we're tasking principals to take the lead in terms of providing the professional learning with the modules. One of the things that we would like to do is see the capacity, capacity or the skills be lifted with those leads, and they could do that with their principal, as well as working with, uh, their colleagues to bring in resources. So like at, for example, an elementary school, they could bring in resources for the various grade levels and meet with the teams and provide them that, the lessons to, to give to their students.
And, uh, I'm sure you already figured this out, how, if this are teacher- And I'm sure you already figured this out, how if this are teachers, are they being taken away from their classroom teaching assignment to do this work?
Well, that's, that's a crucial balance, right? So, and that's one of the things when we met with them the first time, that, that's one of the things that they were asking and making sure that we wouldn't do that, right?
Yeah. And if, if we're asking them to do additional work, I'm wondering if there's some compensation for this extra work for the staff members?
Yes, as, as I have so clearly in my mind, LCAP. So goal three has to do specifically with the work that we're doing here as well as action one. So that's, that is the line item that will actually be funding the additional work that they'll be doing.
Great, good, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And then another quick question for the culturally responsive curriculum committee. My, the same question, are the representative teachers, who will be in that, who is in that committee? What roles do they have?
So that, I will have to get that information back to you. I just know that they've started the committee. Ms. Pilhoffer has been directly involved with that, so I can bring that back.
Great, thank you. And I'm happy to see the collaboration from the school sites, the district. It, it really takes a lot of work, a lot of effort to do this. And I'm happy to see that's happening. Also, I want to acknowledge and thank the site administrators, the site, the teachers, the school staff, everyone that you mentioned here on your graphs. Because it takes commitment to do this and it takes courage. So thank you to everyone who's doing the work. Thank you. And now we move to the next item, which is coming events. And it's only 8:34. We will be out of here before nine o'clock, Ms. Edison. Any future, any comments on future agenda items from the board members? Coming events, any questions, any information, Dr. Maldonado? No? Well, thank you. And at 8:34 concludes the Board of Education meeting, meeting adjourned.